The Monday, January 13th, 2020 meeting of the Market City Commission is now called to order at 6:00 PM. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Bonzel.
Here.
Commissioner Frazier.
Here.
Commissioner Lorenzer.
Here.
Commissioner Schlegel.
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse.
Here.
Mayor Protem Hill.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Commissioners, we have an agenda in front of us. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Lorenzer.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with one change. I'd like to split out item number eight into two separate items. So, number eight being the sale of the property of parcel 13, and number nine would be the HTMA agreement. This would also change the ad hoc committee to item number 10 instead of nine, as it reads now.
Thank you, Commissioner Lorenzer. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Bonzel. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes 7-0. We have several vacancy -- oh, I'm sorry, brings us to announcements. We have several vacancies on city boards and committees. To learn more, please visit the City of Marquette's website. I will list the names of the committees at this point that we have some vacancies on. We've got the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee, Board of Review, Board of Zoning Appeals, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, Harbor Advisory Committee, Investment Advisory Board, Local Development Finance Authority, Local Officers Compensation Commission, Market Area Wastewater Treatment Advisory Board, Market County Transit Authority, Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and the Police Fire Pension Board. If you're interested in volunteering, you can go on our website. We would love to have you. It's a great way to give back to your community. That brings us to item number one, Boards and Committees. We've got some new members to welcome. I have Christina Perhatch to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and Michael Dunn to the Planning Commission. If either of you are in the audience today, would you please join me at the side podium?
I gotta break in.
Hey, Michael.
Hi, I am.
Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you.
Got a pin for you here. You can wear proudly while you represent the City of Marquette on the committee and in your other city endeavors. Appreciate you stepping up and helping out.
No problem.
Thank you.
Both players can be of use.
Welcome.
Thanks.
Go quick, is Christina in the audience before we move on? Commissioners, we have one appointment under number two, appointment Christina Behrens for the Public Art Commission, Market Public Art Commission. We have a motion. Commissioner Lorenzer.
I have a motion to appoint Christina Behrens for the Marquette Public Art Commission for an unexpired term ending in February 26 of 2022.
Leave a second. Commissioner Stonehouse.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes 7-0. We have one reappointment. Do we have a motion for this reappointment? Dennis Smith to Marquette Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. Commissioner Schlegel.
I'd make the motion to appoint Dennis -- or reappoint Dennis Smith, as stated.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Mayor Protem Hill.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes 7-0. Brings us to public comment. Public comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please clearly state your name and physical address when making public comments. Please note the commissioners cannot immediately respond to public comments. Our chance to do so is at the end of the meeting during commissioner comments. Would anyone like to speak for public comment?
Hi, I'm Kerry Gottlieb. I hate public speaking, so I'm gonna read this. "I'm Kerry Gottlieb. I live at 1076 South Lake Street. I am speaking now as President of the Nokamenon Trail Network. I am asking the City Commission to agree to the terms we have negotiated with city administration to sell parcel 13 of the Hartwood to the Nokamenon Trail Network. We've been negotiating with the city since August of 2018, have worked through many issues, and I hope have pleased as many people and parties as possible, with no one getting everything they want, which is a sign of a good compromise. As I am sure you are all aware of the impact NTN has had on our community in terms of improving our quality of life and making Marquette a destination city for tourists and new residents, I'm not going to spend much time on that. Our goal for parcel 13, assuming you approve the sale, is to move the parking lot entrance from a dangerous spot on County Road 553 to Division, where traffic is less and slower. We will also develop infrastructure on the property, including toilets, a storage building, a pump track, additional trails, and ultimately, and ideally, our offices. At the same time, we will keep the majority of the property as it is, natural and beautiful. Our executive director, Lori Howsworth, behind me, and I and a couple other board members are here to answer any questions that come up. In my remaining time, I am taking off my NTN hat. I am putting on my city resident hat. I want to ask the City Commission to address and deal with my and my neighbors' problems on Lake Street, specifically snowmobiles. The snowmobile trail comes from Harvey and turns west at the Carp River Bridge, and despite signage there stating no snowmobiles allowed on Lake Street, that appears to be invisible to sled riders, either because of the helmets they wear, they're too distracted, too inebriated, too something. They come down Lake Street day and night in large numbers, and it's annoying, and they are not allowed there. One rider actually asked my wife who was walking on the bike path, "The sign says no snowmobiles. Does that mean I'm not supposed to be here?" So apparently, there is a cognitive disconnect. A few years ago, a simple solution was tried that worked, simple two-by-four barriers on Lake Street at the Carp River Bridge. I asked DPW to replace those barriers today, but since I'm standing here in front of you tonight, I'm gonna tell you, whatever city commissioner gets this done, automatically gets my vote next time they run. Tell me which one of you gets it done, and you got my vote. I don't want snowmobiles on Lake Street. Thank you."
Anyone else for public comment?
Hello, I'm Matt Toriano with the Department of Natural Resources. I live at 213 East Ohio Street in Marquette. I would like to reserve time to speak on items eight and now nine.
Sir, unfortunately, we're not allowed to reserve time anymore.
Not allowed to reserve time anymore?
There was a change in the rules of procedure at our last meeting.
Oh!
So, we're not supposed to engage in discussion, but you're not able to reserve time, so please make your comments now.
Okay, so I will make my comments now. The Department of Natural Resources would like to support the sale of parcel 13 to the Nokamenon Trail Network. We'd like to support it because we support the mission of the NTN, and we recognize the value that it has in the community. Also, we'd like to -- I would like to express on behalf of the Department of Natural Resources that we really support the clause in there to allow them permanent site control for the trails through their measure. This durable site control will allow them to compete for grants, which they've not been able to compete for in the past, which is very important to that organization. Now, I would also like to ask that, when the commission approves the sale, that we issue a stay and table the agreement. And the reason being is that the department finds that it's very amorphous with regards to what it allows for management, or excuse me, what management is allowed under the agreement. And we have significant concerns regarding what this would mean for the other trails in the Hartwood Forest property, particularly the motorized trails. So the department would like to ask that you approve the sale of parcel 13 and table the agreement until we can work together to find a solution that involves all the stakeholders, both motorized and non-motorized in this solution, recognizing that we can come to a solution, and that the agreement likely doesn't intend to cut off any type of motorized use. It just doesn't address it. And so, the department would like to see it addressed in an agreement down the road, where we're involved in some sort of negotiations. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
My name is Don Britton. I'm with 121 Deerview Trail in Chalkley Township. I'm a snowmobile advocate. I don't advocate snowmobiles on Lake Street, by the way. If they watch the signs, they can make it around there without getting on Lake Street. Anyway, I'd like to address my concerns on proposal, I guess it's number nine, or item number nine. I feel that we should have, all stakeholders should have some kind of stay in the management plan of this parcel. I was also on the ad hoc committee when we, when the city bought this property from Hartwood, and I just want to let you know, the snowmobile trail has been there prior to that, and hopefully we can keep it there. I just like to have my concerns as far as the management plan, so, thank you.
My name is Ryan Brang. I'm at 1038 Alaway Road. I like Kerry, I'm gonna have some notes here, so. I'm here representing the 906 Adventure Team regarding the Hartwood Trail Management Agreement. It's a lot of words, so I'm just gonna say HTMA going forward here. There are some specific points about this agreement that have either not been clearly defined, or do not support the interests of many of the citizens of Marquette. Number one is the potential sale of parcel 13 to the NTN has been public, and it definitely has our full support. However, the HTMA has not been made public, and would potentially impact 23,000 people in the community, most of whom are not NTN members. Additionally, the HTMA may impact both non-motorized and motorized comments, as we've already heard, the latter having no opportunity to give input on this agreement up until this point. The HTMA as presented to the commission does not offer a process for conflict resolution in the event two user groups cannot agree on a decision made by the trail manager. We pointed this out to the city and commission in a letter delivered on December 18, 2019. Also, how events will secure dates on the annual calendar has not been defined. Number four, whom on behalf of the trail manager will make decisions impacting the Hartwood is also not clearly defined. Number five, to date, no one has been able to provide any of the official forms organizations will use under the proposed HTMA. A city representative told us that they have not yet been created. Number six, identification of quote "acute trail damage" end quote has been suggested as a potential trail manager concern. However, neither city personnel nor the trail manager can provide a consistent definition of what this is, or who decides what does and does not qualify as acute trail damage. And seven, in order to address these concerns, multiple attempts have been made to meet with the city manager since early December, and these requests have been ignored. The Hartwood Forest land is owned by the residents of Marquette. If the city is motivated to turn over control of this very important community resource, we feel it should be managed by a diverse group of users, representing all outdoor enthusiasts, not a single private entity. As mountain bikers and runners enjoy the Hartwood, so too do hunters, hikers, fishermen, snowmobile and ORV riders, and landowners. Every time a trail is added, moved, or modified in some way, many people are impacted. As mentioned previously, the 906 Adventure Team is in support of the NTN owning and protecting this parcel and the areas of the Hartwood. However, this is a major decision regarding important property that should not be rushed. We would ask that all parties are allowed equal representation regarding the decisions made in management of this much respected and appreciated community resource. Thank you very much.
Anyone else for public comment?
Frank Javero, 350 East Ridge, Marquette. These are my opinions. The item in parcel two states that it's northwest of Lake Shore and 41. It's northeast. A manager, a typist, and two members each overlooked this during agenda prep. Similar confusion was displayed here last October 28. Some of those who make our haphazard land use decisions can't discern east from west. December 16, our planner said he's followed the strategic plan by negotiating the Cliff's Dows sale. We need to protest plan revisions harder to keep land use items from becoming done deals, often based on who's who. During the revisions, they say nothing's definite, when the informed know better. I'm likely the lone soul left who partook in the Cliff's Dows dollar sale. Ms. Hill has twice mentioned the ensuing mess. For her information, this board fully knew of the financial and environmental risks ahead of the vote. Cliff's Dows needed to be handled years ago, like beach erosion. Mr. Stonehouse's spiel about the BLM's culpability doesn't explain why legal action wasn't pursued years ago. Ms. Hill made a good point about understanding the water to assure millions, the millions invested are going to work. She has tried to improve the transparency, yet overlooked her aspiration by voting to steal our important chance to speak during agenda items. December 13, Mrs. Smith and Mr. Keefe met clandestinely to finagle this reduction of our public speaking time with no public vetting. Yes, I saw the sentence yellowed on the draft, thinking it was a redundancy, not believing that even this board would undertake such a sleazy act against us, just utter betrayal. Our new members bought into a bad bag of dope. Mr. Bonzel contacted other municipalities, which ones? Not realizing that what applies to them doesn't necessarily apply here. He acts as if he knows what's best for public comment without asking those who use it. Too many members tend to act as if life began the day they assumed their seats. Mr. Lorenzer ignored public comment when he said we can email him and call with concerns. He disregarded the history of a board so sordid, an audience needs to hear our concerns so to measure the results. Most behind-the-scenes comments evaporate in the thin air. He told me he voted as such so Madam Mayor can run an efficient meeting. He blamed another man for not speaking to the items. You don't steal something for everyone based on a few. Of course, we know it wasn't only one man, but also critics who do stick to the topics. All the high hopes I had for this new board are quash. Mr. Frazier has a point about the every commissioner, but it's not so much personal as this board's flagrant, ongoing mishandling of our public. Unless agenda comment is reinstated, I'll never vote for a commission candidate again. Presidents, senators, millages, yes. City commissioners, no.
Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. Up next, we have a presentation by the Marquette Area Sister Cities Partnership, "Trip to Hagashiomi, Japan," by Paulette Lindberg. Ms. Lindberg, would you please join me at the side podium? And City Manager Angela, if you could join us as well, please.
This'll be the holder for this. I'll present this, and then I'll make some comments. Just so, yeah, so everybody can hear. This is a tray that is the city gift from Hagashiomi Shiga, Japan, our sister city, and I'll speak about it in just a few moments. It's made from what's called the Japanese horse walnut wood. And they have engraved on the back in Japanese and in English the recognition of our 40 years. The signing originally was with Yokichi Shiga, Japan, on August 13, 1979. So they have recognized our 40 years, not only in presenting this gift to our city, but in many, many ways when our delegation was there, and I'll speak to that in just a few moments. So if we can get a photo, then I will continue.
One more, guys?
Okay.
If you don't mind, one more photo?
Oh, one more photo, sure. This will go on our Facebook page, and it'll also get sent to Japan. Kind of doing this a little bit backwards here, but to Mayor Smith and to the city commissioners, I want to thank you for many years of support that you've given the Marquette Area Sister Cities Partnership. Forty years have passed since Marquette, Michigan, and Yokichi Shiga of Japan became, through the help of Rotary of Marquette and Northern Michigan University, Price Dorfeld, and overall the state of Michigan. Through all of these entities, we became a sister city here in Marquette, Michigan. We are celebrating and continue to celebrate every year, but we did just complete our 40th anniversary. The state of Michigan is just into their 51st year, having completed their 50th year of having 13 to 14 cities downstate who are active in many of the sister city roles and agreements. Northern has provided now, for 40 years, a student to attend the university for one full year, and right now, in Hagashiomi, they are accepting the applications for the 41st student, which Northern has approved to also welcome for the school year beginning in August of this year, 2020. So we are grateful to all of the entities that support and help and keep this program going. Mayor Smith, I do also want to thank you for appointing Commissioner Lorenzer to serve on our board as a representative of the city commission. That is part of our bylaw agreement from a good while ago, that we want to keep working closely with the city and keep the city informed of various activities, be it the Consul General visiting Marquette, as he did last August to help us celebrate, or delegations going to Japan, as 10 of us went this past October for 10 days. It happens in the front row that four of my board members and/or past delegates are here. Three are board members, and Mrs. Anderson was a member of our delegation this year. Along with what was really cool, two 7th grade Bothwell students were on the trip with us. And they have continued to kind of ask, "When can we go back?" I really please, I guess I'm proud of that question, because I wasn't always real sure that they liked the Rotary meeting, and the Chamber of Commerce meeting, and the Lions Club meetings and such, that they very diligently participated in. But it was, it was an honor to have them traveling with us, as it was the other members of our delegation. We would hope, from our committee's work in the future, to do what other cities in Michigan are doing and have done, and that would be to organize the High School Student Exchange Group. We've had a middle school group from there visit us. We've had independent student travel guests going over with our delegates, but we haven't had a real formal delegation group of students. So we're going to work on that. It's a pretty big goal for us to look forward to. For tonight, it was my pleasure to be able to present the gift, just as it was to receive it when we were over there in October. And some people have said, "Well, what did we give them?" Well, it was a piece of stonework done by a former resident of Marquette, with the picture of the Coast Guard station on it, and engraved was Marquette Hagashiomi, and the anniversary dates, August 13, '79, on into 2019. And it was well received. That type of gift was given to their chamber, to their Rotary Club, as well as to their city. So, with all of that, I thank all of you for being here tonight to hear some of the story of our sister city program. We have 15 members on our board, and we're active and busy, and looking forward to a delegation that will visit us mid-September or mid-October. It hasn't been determined yet. With it being the year of the Olympics in Tokyo, they're not really able to probably make a good plan to get out of there in the summer, to be here for our summer season. So, I think it'll be mid-September, mid-October, and when we have that information, we'll let the city commissioners know that. And through Andrew, you'll be informed of a lot of things that we're going to be working on this year. So thank you very much. It's my pleasure to be here this evening. Thank you.
Just wanted to say thank you to Paulette for coming tonight, giving us this wonderful gift, and on behalf of the sister cities. Thank you to the board and to the delegation for going. We appreciate all you do, and I'm looking forward to hearing the reports from Commissioner Lorenzer moving forward. Thank you. So up next, we have another presentation, this one by the Marquette Area Wastewater Treatment Advisory Board, by Chair John Kengas. John, if you could come over to the side podium, please. Thank you very much, and we will reserve our comments on the commission until the end of the presentation.
Thank you. Okay, just making sure you can see what I can see. I am the chair. John Kengas, I'm the Chair of the Wastewater Treatment Advisory Board. I'm also the Superintendent of Public Works for Marquette Township. I think I'm the chair because by default, the other person that could have been the chair didn't want to be here tonight. Nothing against you or the crowd. This is the board. You can see the city has two current members, Harold Hayes, Gary Simpson is the alternate, but has been pretty much voting on a monthly basis, and there is a vacancy, as we heard Kurt Goodman is our staff liaison, and interestingly, the only segue from the last presentation to this is 40 years, and that's how many years Kurt has been an employee of this great city. So, congratulations to him. I hear he's thinking about retiring this year. That'll come up later. Little bit of history, the board was established in 1977, PA 135 of 1951. The city serves as the contract operator of the facility, and the facility is owned by the city and Marquette and Chalkley Townships. The board oversees the operation, recommends rules and regulations, allocates the, and assigns the fixed demand costs. Interestingly, on there, you'll see a little bit of an interesting breakdown in that the city's percentage of ownership is 84. I believe last year, when this presentation was made, that would have been 85, and that's because the city sold 1% of its ownership to Chalkley Township, as did Marquette Township, and that was to accommodate the expansion of their sewer system for the casino project, and then all of the properties along M28. The other aspect is the allocation and assigning of O&M costs, and that's based on the actual flow. And then finally, making recommendations regarding the operating budget, which has been approved for the 2020 fiscal year. Currently, we are at $1.67, 65.7 cents per k-gal, that's 1,000 gallons, so we can treat wastewater much cheaper than you can buy a bottle of water at the gas station. And you'll see there will probably be a slight increase for 2020. Lowest rate there, $1.02 per 1,000 gallons. This is a picture from 2008 of the facility. That's not what it looks like today, although some of the footprint is the same. You'll see there's some key parts of the facility missing, including the parking area in front, as well as some other key features. But planning began in 1941. Construction started in 1951, and I'm gonna jump ahead real quick. The reason for it is, back in the 1930s and up to that, raw wastewater was dumped right into the lower harbor. So it wasn't only corporate America that was bad stewards of our environment, right? The solution to pollution is dilution, and that's exactly what happened with our wastewater back then. And it's not because we didn't know better, it's just we didn't really have a lot of the technology that we have today. So going back, secondary treatment was added in 1978, and then there was redesign and construction in 2008. And then, as you all know, we recently had the upgrades as part of the Johnson Controls So accomplishments for last year. First of all, I think those of you that have been here for a while, Kirk Page, who was the person that I replaced in Marquette Township, was the former chair. He had been a 39-year employee with Marquette Township, which is pretty impressive. So Kirk retired just a few days ago. Kurt is retiring this year. That's two 40-year employees gone. Think about how much institutional knowledge you lose there in a few short months. That 2% plant capacity sale to Chalkley Township was finalized last year. The computer maintenance management system, which is digitizing all of their work orders, all the records, added 500 acres of farmland to the biosolids program. What that does is it hopefully saves operational money as far as where you have to deliver it, when you have to get rid of it. And that's basically the solids that come out at the end, separate from the clean water that goes back into the harbor. Maintain a consistent per-unit rate for the wastewater facility operation. Number-one digester cleaned, inspected, and gas lines replaced. I'm sure this is almost as exciting as watching paint dry, right? I'm sure this is almost as exciting as watching paint dry, right? And then, of course, provide a grant assistance to other departments, and that's just basically a reflection of the, the staff that's available at the plant. Goals for the coming year. I mentioned Kurt is retiring, so a succession plan to replace him. I think that's going to be a critical decision moving forward for the city as contract operator. Seek grant funding opportunities. That will also be very important for other parts of the plan for the coming year. Continue the development of the formal asset management plan, and that's really how infrastructure is being managed these days, is with these asset management plans. Continue maintaining a reserve replacement fund, and of course, that's critical so that we don't have to borrow any more money than necessary when it's time to do critical projects. Negotiate a new three-year biosolids hauling contract. Of course, the sooner you know what it's going to cost to haul your biosolids, the easier it is to put your budget together. Expand our public outreach program, and I can tell you, I'm not volunteering to do that. I think maybe we'll leave that to the technical experts at the plant. Upgrade the SCADA software and hardware, and I have to say, just from my experience around the county, that the city's SCADA system is probably better today than most other organizations will ever see, but it's also reached its age where it's time for an upgrade. And then finally, submit a project plan for an SRF loan, that's a state revolving fund for solids handling improvements. So what is that? It's a project that will reduce, reduce the risk of non-compliance for the discharge permit, reduce handling costs of those solids while increasing flexibility, and then promote sustainability. And really, what that comes down to is, number one, what kind of waste can you accept? What quality of gas can you create to run the new cogenerators that are out there, which is basically, instead of burning it off into the atmosphere, you create your internal power and heat, really neat upgrade done there recently. And what that is, is adding some facilities, adding some capability, whether it's conveyor belts, hopefully something along those lines, so that it doesn't increase manpower required, so that the capability within the facility itself on a very small footprint can become more efficient, as well as accept more waste that will help generate more gas so that the facility can become more energy efficient. And then, of course, part of that would be also getting grant forgiveness, or loan forgiveness due to the green project reserve credits for the project. Schedule, the first part is already complete in that the project plan has already been finalized. It's a matter of going into the next two years of the funding process, environmental assessments, all, all the necessary pages, volumes of front-end work for the project plan, getting Eagle approval and the funding finalized. Critical step in that whole process is a March approval by this commission for the engineering services. Do I have that right, Kurt? Okay, so then, that would lead to a March twenty-one closing of the loan. That's next year. Some highlights from the Johnson Controls Project, digester gas to energy commissioning in progress, so that's those two co-gen units I briefly mentioned earlier, and that's basically generating your own heat and power on-site from the gases you create by treating wastewater. Final effluent water system completed, filtrate pumps completed, solids handling study completed. That's leading to this project coming up in the next two years. HVAC and building envelope improvements completed. There's the two co-gen units. I believe at least one of them can run on its own based on gases generated within the facility. The facility needs additional gas to run both simultaneously currently. There's Kirk Page. He's the former chair of this board. I replaced him at Township. Wish him well in his retirement, and hopefully, I can do half as good of a job as he did as the chair. Any questions?
Thank you, John. Commissioners, do we have any comments or questions on the presentation? Mayor Protem Hell?
Thank you very much, and congrats to the many folks who are, the folks who've put in all of those many years, making sure that our, this vital part of our infrastructure has been maintained and operated in a way that keeps the lake and our other waterways With the, some of this expansion and pieces, since it was under the Johnson Controls, I don't know who would speak to this or maybe get back to us, but how is some of these investments, if Johnson Controls was going to pay for itself out of the improvements, how, how is this related to that program? And I understand you might not be able to answer that, but.
Specific improvements, remember?
Right, I mean, yeah.
Are you talking about our, for twenty twenty-one, our solids handling upgrades?
Well, I guess, is there a connection at all between them? I mean, or it was sort of alluded to, but the idea was that we were investing in projects that would pay for themselves, and so how are these two related?
The solids handling upgrade will be a project that is done, you know, with, you know, through our advisory board, our co-ownership with the two townships. JCI will not be involved in that project.
But it's being driven by the fact that the biodigesters need more gas? That's what I don't understand.
Sorry, I don't mean to step on Kurt's toes here. The solids handling project would be an expansion of the existing facility. The co-gen units were an upgrade of the current facility. So it, it created energy efficiency within the facility itself, whereas, well, I guess the solids handling project would as well, but from a much different angle. It's, because it's an expansion of the facility, it wasn't entertained, as far as I understand, under the Johnson, Johnson Controls contract.
So the plan was to expand the plant, and the energy efficiency piece was done before that was, the expansion was going to be proposed and planned?
I haven't been involved in the board long enough to tell you the whole history of that, but there's two separate issues there.
Okay.
And maybe I wasn't clear enough on that, so I apologize.
And is, would that involve folks trucking more stuff in, or is this going to be more pipes and, and, and how does, if it's expanding, that means it has to get in there? So how's that going to?
So there would be an increase in truck wastewater, which generates revenue, but also creates, hopefully, with the proper studying and experimenting, additional gases to help run that second generator simultaneously.
Thank you, John. I know, it sounds like City Manager, City Manager Angely has some comments.
I think John clarified it. I was just going to mention that the, the increase in capacity that they're, they are proposing will, or should produce more biogases that can then be used to run the generators. Right now, we don't have enough to run both of them for twenty-four hours a day, but by the, the upgrade they're talking about, we will be very close, and that will, in essence, provide gas so that we don't have to buy electricity and save on those costs. The JCI program was completely different, and it did come in ahead of, earlier before we were discussing this part of the project.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Hell, you have more comments?
And then my only other question is, with the rising lake levels that we've been experiencing, how is this impacting the wastewater treatment plant?
Yeah, you know, after I sort of put together the presentation, that was something I probably should put in. Our wastewater plant staff is very aware of the high, the high lake levels. With the river high, it does present a challenge at certain times of the year as it backs up into our clarifiers. So we have been working with the Eagle about some solutions, so at certain times, when there is a huge rain event, we, we did put together just recently a wet weather plan where we'll be able to, you know, put the gate in at the end of the plant effluent, and then with some bypass pumps, pump into the river. So we are definitely aware of the high river, the high lake levels, and not only Marquette is experiencing that, but all treatment facilities throughout, you know, UPE, and really the state. But we're definitely monitoring that situation. Good question.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other comments or questions? Commissioner Frazier?
How's your, I know you used to cook your lunch all the time in the old methane gas, you know, burner out there, Kurt, but is that going okay for you? I know you said you got, it's got enough juice now, a full of one generator. I'm sure it's making, not making BLP happy, but so is making your plant, is it helping your plant a little bit, stuff like that? The old methane gas you used to burn off in front, now running that generator, or what's going on with that?
Well, yeah, anytime you could reuse a, you know, a product, you know, especially in the wastewater, you know, that, that's a good thing. So we are able to supplement, you know, what we would waste. I'd say about twenty-five percent was wasted, but also, the good thing about the co-gens, not only does it produce electricity, but we get the benefit of, you know, of the heat, of the heat. So by having boiler wad, pipes go through the generators, it preheats, so the boilers don't operate as much. So it, it's a combined heat and power system. So that's one thing, I know everyone says just producing electricity, but you also get the benefit of the heat. And again, it's, we're in a, we're just fine-tuning a lot of it right now. It's been a learning curve for about six, seven months.
Yeah.
The good news about it is we got the manufacturers on-site, and as of today, we're, we should be doing final commissioning this week, and then we'll be able to really start to take a look at it and, you know, validate and quantify the savings.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the commission? Commissioner Schlegel?
Thank you, Mayor. Kurt, just comments of compliments, really, I think that the, the plan that you guys have had in place over the years, as I followed, you know, and I, believe me, I don't go home and, and sit and read a lot of the stuff that he's generating over there, but I just, I, I think that the infrastructure component, the JCI project, here are the things that you guys have coming down the, variously down the pipeline, and, and the, what are they called, the kind, the generators, the, what's, what's the first part of that, the, the double burn that we're getting there? The co-gens?
The co-gens.
Okay. You know, all of these things are just really exciting when you, when you sit down and think about the efficiencies that are involved, and I think that that's a compliment to your planning over the years, and if you're going to be retiring soon, I just want to make sure that you get, you know, the, the proper credit for the, for the hard work that you put in there. So thank you for all of that. And at the same time, it just, it makes me feel good that you guys have such a good handle on, on what we're doing, not just the next phase, but the phase next, and, and there's just constant planning, so thank you for that.
Well, thank you, Kurt. Thank you, John. Appreciate what you're doing and continue to do. We look forward to hearing more to come. Thank you. Next item is a consent agenda. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, I motion to accept the, or, yes, to accept the consent agenda as written.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Schlegel?
I second the motion.
Any comments?
No comment.
None.
Hearing none, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes, seven zero. Moving on to unfinished business, item number seven, schedule a public hearing to consider ordinance number six eight eight, land development code amendments. City Clerk, could we please have the background?
Thank you, Mayor. Background, Marquette City Commission in October of two thousand and nineteen adopted ordinance number six eighty-two to allow for the eventual operation of adult-use marijuana establishments in the city of Marquette. Per this ordinance, the city will begin accepting applications for these licenses on March one of this year. In advance of the March one date, the Planning Commission has worked in conjunction with city staff to create recommended zoning regulations for adult-use marijuana establishments. The recommendations are detailed in the attached document, while the attached maps highlight the proposed locations where each type of establishment would be allowed. Additionally, unrelated items are included in the proposed amendments and are aimed at refining and clarifying the LDC, which was adopted in early two thousand and nineteen. While these changes are numerous, several serve to clarify certain sections of the LDC and to add or delete language related to items that were previously omitted. Others involve the addition of certain other uses in specific districts. These recommended changes were developed, discussed, and refined during several work sessions during the final months of two thousand and nineteen, and were approved with amendments by the Planning Commission following a January seventh public hearing. It was moved by M Larson, seconded by E. Brooks, and approved on a four-to-three vote that after review of the Land Development Code amendments presented as case oh one ZOA oh one twenty-twenty, and after conducting a public hearing and carefully consideration of contents of the draft LDC amendments, the Planning Commission finds that the draft LDC amendments are justified and appropriate, and therefore should be approved by the City Commission with a revision to allow retail marijuana establishment in the T-five subd-, sub-district of the Third Street Quarter Foreign Base Code District. Fiscal effect none. Recommendations, schedule a public hearing for ordinance number six eighty-eight, Land Development Code amendments, for the February tenth, two thousand and twenty city commission meeting. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, I motion to schedule a public hearing for ordinance six eight eight, Land Development Code amendments for the, for the February tenth, two thousand and twenty city commission meeting.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Lorenzer?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Stonehouse, any comments?
Well, only that, this is again, one more step along the process, that, you know, the city commission did the initial work on it, it's gone to the Planning Commission, they've gone through the code, done the detailed work, and have sent us back a document that we now need to have a, a public hearing on and eventually take a vote on.
Great. Any comments, Commissioner Lorenzer?
I, I just want to note that this does come after a, a public work session where your comments are valued and important. This passed four-three in Planning Commission, so it was pretty tight, and we had two commissioners absent, so hopefully, we can get a lot done and, and take a deep dive into this land development code amendment, and I, I welcome the public to that meeting, too.
That meeting is on January twenty-eighth. Do we have a time?
Twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth?
At six.
Twenty-ninth at six P.M. More information on the city website. Commissioners, any additional discussion on this topic? Seeing none, I just wanted to add that this action is only to schedule the public hearing, there's no other official action happening by this item. All in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes, seven zero. Moving on to unfinished business, item number eight. As a reminder, we did split this item out, so this is only the purchase request for city-owned property parcel thirteen, Hartwood Forest Land, parcel number zero five one five nine eight zero. This is only the sale of the property. We will address the HTMA in item number nine. City Clerk, could we please have the background?
Thank you, Mayor. Background, the Nucaman Trail Network, NTN, previously presented the city manager with a letter of intent to purchase approximately twenty-five acres of city-owned property, more commonly known as parcel thirteen of the Hartwood Forest land. The property includes the NTN's established south trailhead, parking lot, pavilion, and pump track. The letter of intent expresses the NTN's desire to work with the city to develop and maintain amenities for the trail network. As with all property in the city of Marquette, any development will be subject to local zoning. This property is currently zoned as conservation slash recreation, which provides for future development to be consistent with the existing public recreational use. At its April eighth, two thousand and nineteen regular meeting, the city commission adopted a resolution of intent to sell, which directed the city manager to negotiate a sale of the property and bring back the sale to the city commission for final approval. Terms for this, for the purchase agreeable to both parties are set forth in the attached agreement for purchase and sale of real estate. A Hartwood Trail Management Agreement that outlines the roles and responsibilities of each party related to the overall plan for the property is also attached for commission consideration. Fiscal effect, the city will realize a one-time income of ninety-six thousand dollars for the sale of the property. This purchase price represents eighty percent of the appraised value of the parcel. The Hartwood Trail Management Agreement includes a revenue-sharing component for NTN events on the property. Funds collected will be held in the Hartwood Improvement Fund administered by the city for future needs or repairs on the Hartwood or repairs on the Hartwood property. Recommendation: Adopt the attached resolution of sale, authorize the execution of the attached agreement for purchase and sale of real estate and Hartwood Trail Management Agreement. Review the Hartwood Trail Management Agreement in one year and direct the city manager to create a policy for event scheduling and conflict resolution and to complete the sale. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, Clerk. Just wanted to clarify, um, with the recommendation, it is kind of all still lumped together, but at this point, we're only considering the resolution of sale. So, that in mind. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Mayor Pro Tim Hill?
I move that we adopt the attached resolution of sale.
Do we need to add any additional language into that?
Yeah.
Okay, we're all right. Second on that, anyone? Commissioner Schlegel?
I'd second the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner, or, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Hill, any comments?
It's an exciting moment to move forward with this project, and it's been a long time coming. Thank you.
Commissioner Schlegel, any comments?
Basically the same. I'm excited to see this move forward, and I, I just think that, uh, um, the city and, uh, everybody involved in this process of, has been, uh, uh, doing a great job in order to get, uh, get to where we are today. So, thank you for your time and effort.
Commissioners, any other comments or, go ahead. Commissioner Frazier?
Uh, that are probably, I agree with the sale, just pardon my bad, uh, suggestion with the DNR, get all the parties involved, you know, the bikers, and all the, the equipment users and hikers, maybe we get a representative of each party together just to, to finalize the, I mean, the sale's already finalized, just to kind of work on the property management if, so as nobody gets dubbages or so.
Thank you, Commissioner Frazier. I believe we'll get into that on the next agenda item. Any other questions or, um, comments on the sale of the property? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I would only make the comment, Your Honor, that, uh, this is a major step forward, and it's been worked on for some time, and it certainly, I think, clearly demonstrates the commitment of the City Council, of the City Commission, to the Hartwood Forest, to the maintenance of the forest, uh, as, as we have been working it through the years, and the ability to take a piece of the property and to make it more productive than it has been. So, my heart goes out, or my thanks go out, certainly to N.T.N. and the city staff for being able to put the package together, and for the commission to be able to show its evident support. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just recognizing that city attorney had something to say.
Oh. City Attorney, did you have something you wanted to add?
I do. For a point of clarification, the motion was only for resolution of sale.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you also need to authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
Okay. Uh, Mayor Pro Tim Hill, would you like to amend that motion?
I would like to amend my motion to include the statement that the city manager is also authorized to execute, uh, the sale.
The attached agreement for purchase and sale.
The purchase agreement, thank you. I knew there was a word other than sale.
And do we have a second on that amendment? Commissioner Bonzel?
I'll second that amendment.
All right. All in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Oh, is it a roll call vote? I'm sorry about that. Roll call vote. Okay, roll call vote, please, City Clerk. And do we need to do it twice because of the amendment?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
So, you're first voting on the amendment?
We're first voting on the amendment.
Sorry.
So, roll call, please. Thank you.
Commissioner Bonzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Lorenzer?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Hill?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. And then, City Clerk, if we could please get a roll call vote on the overall motion that was made?
Thank you. Commissioner Bonzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Lorenzer?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Hill?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Thank you. All right, that brings us to item number nine, Hartwood Trail Management Agreement, or otherwise known as HTMA with the Nukemun and Trail Network, N.T.N. We have already had the background read to us on the previous item. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, I would motion to, um, let's see if I can pick this up here so it makes sense, to, um, direct the city manager to review the Hartwood Trail Management Agreement in one year and direct the city manager to create a policy for ev- for event scheduling and conflict resolution and to complete the sale. Well, let's drop that last part about completing the sale. Now, is that enough of a cobble-together motion? Okay, uh, what I'm, what I'm motioning for is to direct the city manager to, now, wait a minute. This is hard to pull out of there. What would a good motion be?
I'm gonna approve the HTMA.
Execution.
Yeah, well, okay, I would direct, I would motion then for the City Commission to approve the eight, the, uh, Trail Management Agreement, and for the city manager to, now, not the city manager to review, because really, it's the review of, the commission would review in one year. So, we are directing, we are, we are motioning for the, for the City Commission to approve the Hartwood Trail Management Agreement and review that agreement in one year, and direct the city manager to create a policy for event scheduling and conflict resolution and to complete the sale. No, and drop off completing the sale.
Yep.
Hey, we're wandering through the puzzle here. This, that, that's a functional motion, I think.
The Clerk, did he get that? Perfect. Do we have a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Commissioner Stonehouse, any comments?
Well, my comments would be, I, I think, and I would ask, uh, before we take a vote, if the city, uh, manager has an opportunity to address some of the issues that were brought up, uh, by some of the public concerning accessibility, uh, concerning how it might affect, uh, conflict resolution would be handled, uh, the role of the city parks and recreation department, and whether it has any negative impact on other user groups for that area. I think it's important that we have that understanding in front of us.
Thank you, Commissioner Stonehouse. Let's pause and, um, do that. City Manager, if you could start us off, and then I think I may call on the N.T.N. to-
Sure.
-come up as an expert witness in a moment, if you're willing.
Thank you. Um, I'd recommend Lori as the expert out there, too.
[laughing]
Sorry. Um, yes, uh, first of all, this, this document isn't as complex as some people would want it, uh, or might think it might be, and I guess I, I do apologize for that. But basically, what happened here is that the N.T.N. has been managing the Hartwood Trail System for almost 14 years now, based on a permit that was, uh, granted, uh, back in 2006, I believe. And, um, this agreement is changing nothing other than putting that, uh, arrangement into writing. Um, we are giving them, uh, control primarily for, uh, scheduling and planning events only. Uh, this is not, uh, going to s- any way, uh, forbid or restrict the use of the trail system for everyday users. Um, it certainly will not affect the snowmobile trails, uh, the, uh, uh, they've been doing it all these years now, and the trails have still been able to work, and there, there isn't going to be any, any change or any impact there. And, um, so what, what I'm asking them to do and asking you to approve is a, uh, written form of basically what they've been doing for a long time. I did, uh, ask, uh, or request of them a, uh, of revenue stream or a fee schedule be applied to the agreement. The background there is that, uh, when we negotiated the sale of the property, uh, uh, city ordinance allows us to sell for no less than 80% of the appraised value. We had an appraisal done, uh, N.T.N. offered to, uh, uh, pay 80% of the appraised value, which is the $96,000 you've already approved, and I put a condition on that, that, um, that I would support that 80% to the commission if we could somehow work a, uh, small revenue stream into the trail management plan. And, uh, after a lot of work, a lot of discussion, we did incorporate a, a small revenue stream for the city. Uh, it pertains only to events. Uh, it's, uh, basically, it's under, I think, section 12 of the agreement, and, uh, I will say reluctantly, N.T.N. agreed to that. Um, and, uh, in my mind, it was somewhat of a trade-off for them paying the 80% of the appraised value, that it, it, the, uh, revenue stream would, uh, over time, potentially make up that difference. Um, the, uh, well, I'll leave it at that for now. Thank you.
Thank you, and I was just hoping maybe someone from the N.T.N. would, maybe, Ryan, coming up. We had a couple of comments during public comment, concerns about the, um, how about the side podium, please?
Both can come up.
Perfect. And, um, my main question is, we had a couple of public comments concerned about the snowmobile trail, and I just was hoping maybe you could respond on that to maybe put some folks at ease.
Yeah, I don't, the intent in this agreement is management of the non-motorized trails, so I, I don't see that affecting the snowmobile trail at all. Um, and we actually, the way we, uh, route the tra- our winter trails currently, we do it in a way to minimize the crossings of the snowmobile trail for safety of the users, so, um, I, Mike, this doesn't apply to the snowmobile trail, correct? I, that was my understanding.
Thank you. Anything else that you'd like to add, since you're up here?
Um, I, I just think this is a good next step, um, for our relationship with the city, and I know it, it takes some of the, um, some of the problems that the city has had trying to manage the trails when they don't really have staff necessarily assigned to doing it. So, you know, this is a good public-private partnership, the way I see it. Um, some of the issues that have arisen or people have concerns about would really be addressed going forward in a plan that we would do for the property and policies that we could put in place to, to address some of these, uh, concerns that have been raised tonight.
The policies have not been written yet, so if people are saying they haven't seen the policies, they're not written yet, and they need to be written and to be approved by the city.
Thank you. Anyone have, um, on the commission have questions for the N.T.N. or city manager? Commissioner Lorenz?
Let me just add one more thing. I didn't, I didn't add, or I didn't, uh, conclude my comments about the, uh, scheduling. What we've agreed to is, and with, uh, our community services director, is that we will hold at least one, maybe more, uh, annual scheduling conferences, uh, at the direction of the city staff to include N.T.N. and any other user that might be interested in an event, an event only. And we will work diligently to schedule those events with N.T.N. and anybody else that's out there, including 906, uh, to, uh, put in place a solid schedule early on in the season. Now, we haven't gotten into the details as to whether we have to have a different meeting for skiing or anything like that, I, I don't know, but, uh, primarily for the bike race, this is where we're concentrating right now. I hope to have that meeting soon. Um, I think that, uh, as part of those, uh, uh, that scheduling, I'd like to see us or N.T.N. issue permits or contracts that have in writing the, uh, dates agreed upon so that there is no, uh, uh, misunderstanding later on or some confusion as to what dates were what. I mean, we do that now when we, uh, lease or rent a city park for exclusive use, uh, there's all, there's contracts that, that go into place. Uh, and as far as the, uh, conflict resolution, I'm going to suggest that we only get involved as a city staff if there is an event scheduling conflict. Um, I don't see us, uh, being involved in, in petty differences or small events, small things that I think can be worked out between, uh, intelligent adults, uh, at that level. So, um, I'm willing to put staff out there, John specifically, I'm sorry, John, to, uh, if there is a, a conflict that comes up, they can approach John to, to help resolve it. Now, that's just the, the, uh, boundaries of what I'm thinking about. It's not the exact policy or the exact language, but I hope to enter into a deeper discussion with my staff at N.T.N. on how to move forward with that very soon.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any comments or questions? Commissioner Schlegel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just really glad to see this moving forward, and I, I'd like to think that, you know, um, John, thanks for sticking down on this first round, and I hope that, uh, that once this, this formula gets put in place and, and the schedule gets put together by all of those people involved, and I appreciate N.T.N. taking charge with that, but making sure that they, that, plain and simple, this is being done so that there's no overlap in, in great events that are, that are coming to the community, not just here, but in Houghton and throughout the Midwest, because there's so many people that are coming from out of the, out of the area for these events, that the last thing you want to do is to, to have one event run over another, and then, um, you know, in the early stages, it, it was well brought up, uh, that it takes one bad thing or a bad event to kind of ruin the reputation for that area. And so far, things have been going so well that we just don't, we want to make sure that this, that that does not, uh, occur in the future. So, to put the onus on, on the N.T.N., that's great. I think that's, that's going to be a good thing, but we gotta get the, the initial, I'm gonna call it a, uh, calendar of events put together, and thank you for city staff for doing that. Um, and thanks, city manager, for putting a little bit in there for the city. Um, you know, if, if the money's gonna go back in, if you're not familiar with, there's a, the pavilion, pavilion out at the Presque Isle has a, a very similar, um, uh, event charge. So, certain amount of, of fees that are paid for, to use that go back into the coffer, and it's used for restaining, for updates and things like that, specifically for that. So, for us to have this small kitty, and I can't imagine it's gonna be much, but something to, uh, to be used for maintenance, I think that that's just, that's just good business, and, um, I'm glad to see that incorporated. Um, and, uh, I guess that's pretty much it, but, you know, first and foremost, you guys are gonna work with everybody else to make sure that your events are, are, are gonna be going off without a, a hitch and, and that you're not, you know, you're not, you're gonna, you're probably gonna be consulting Houghton and 906 and all these other people, so that you can make sure that, uh, that there's no conflicts in there. I can't imagine you wouldn't, but, uh, thanks in advance.
Commissioner Lorenz?
Um, so, I really want to vote for an HTMA tonight, but, um, th- this is actually the first time that I've heard of, uh, any objections by the DNR. Um, so, that concerns me a little bit. I really appreciate the, the amount of work historically that N.T.N. has done on the trail system. Um, I, I kinda dislike how it was tied to the, uh, purchase agreement, which is why I separated them, because I, I don't like to, um, I just don't think we're there yet for, um, the HTMA right now. I, I, um, definitely agree with some of the concerns about having other stakeholders at the table. Um, I know we have a historic relationship with N.T.N., um, but that was also, you know, that was before some of these major players came in, and I, I don't want to derail a forest management agreement entirely, but, um, I am gonna vote no on this tonight, just because I think we're lacking some details about, uh, conflict resolution, about, um, the, the scheduling fees or, or how that exactly works. So, I would just like to see this a little more detailed. Um, I, I don't know if that's gonna go anywhere tonight, but I'm gonna, um, we voted yes on, on the parcel sale, but I am gonna hopefully, I, I don't think the city has an obligation to mediate any problems, um, but I think that there are major players here who have not had a seat at the table, and I know we did our best to accommodate them, um, but I, I believe we do need to work some things out. So, I, I appreciate the, the work N.T.N. has done. Um, I'm happy to sell you that property, but, um, this is management for the entire Hartwood Forest, not just a parcel that we just sold, so, um, I, I'd hope that we revisit this.
Any other comments? Commissioner Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I had a couple of questions that I would like to direct to the city manager. Um, first, uh, how long do you estimate that it will take for city staff to design and implement an event scheduling and conflict resolution process, and also to produce the, for, any forms that may be necessary, uh, for event scheduling of the south trails?
I would say no longer than 30 days would be the, would be a fair estimate.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Um, and also, um, just to make sure I understand what you said before, because that was new information to me, but scheduling conferences, uh, you plan on scheduling conferences annually with the N.T.N. as well as other user groups, uh, to put in place a schedule early in the season for event- for events on the South Trails, and the other, other user groups, in addition to the NTN, will have a seat at the table during that conference.
That's correct. My thought is that when we have this annual or biannual, how many times we have the meeting is that we publicize it, open it to the, to whoever wants to plan an event. As I mentioned, everyday use, individual use is, is all like it normally is, but if you have an event, if you want to schedule an event, if you're thinking about an event, you know, to have a representative at that meeting so that we can sit down as a group led by my staff, our staff, in putting together, I'm sorry, putting together a schedule for the upcoming season.
No, thank you, I appreciate that. Madam Mayor, would it be in order at this time for me to offer an amendment to Commissioner Stonehouse's motion?
If you'd like to do that, you're welcome to do so.
Thank you. I would move that we adopt, that we amend Commissioner Stonehouse's motion to read as follows. Move that we adopt the attached Hartwood Trail Management Agreement, review the Hartwood Trail Management Agreement in one year, and direct the city manager to create all necessary event scheduling forms and a policy for event scheduling and conflict resolution within thirty days.
I'd just like to check in with the city manager and see if that seems reasonable to him.
Yes, we can do that.
Do we have a second on that amendment? Commissioner Lawrence.
I second that.
Okay, so if we could please have a roll call vote just on the amendment, city clerk?
Commissioner Bonzel.
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel.
Yep.
Commissioner Stonehouse.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Hill.
Yes.
And Mayor Smith.
Yes. Thank you. Do we have additional? Thank you, Commissioner Bonzel, did you have any additional comments or at this time?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, appreciate that amendment. Commissioner Frazier, it looks like you've been waiting to speak.
I think it's a good idea to get city manager, John, get all the city staff together to work with NTN and everybody else, that'd be, the DNR involved too, because they, they first you give us a lot of grants, and they kind of know a lot about the forest property, and not a bad idea for them to kind of work with other parties involved, you know, this isn't the motorized people, the hikers, you know, everybody else. Good to have like a, like a work session, basically, for city staff and the trail people, whoever wants to use it, you know, NTN, the bikers, motorized, all the people just get together and have a quick meeting, so good idea to have DNR involved too, because, you know, John and the city, city manager will be able to do, have the city regulations, similar stuff that we do for if you want to run a park for an agreement, same type of work, but just different ideas, so it's good to have the DNR involved.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Thank you, Commissioner Bonzel, I think that, I, I really hope that that satisfies having all the players at the table. I, I, and, you know, I think we had actually some scheduling conflicts in the past year or so. I hope that, I'm, I'm happy to move this forward with that amendment, and I, you know, hope that we can have some external mediation between all parties and, and hopefully that this trail system can be put to good use for, for everybody involved, so I'm happy to move forward with this one.
Thank you. Just some final comments, wanted to thank city staff for working on this. Oh, did you have additional comments? Go ahead, city manager.
I'm sorry, I just want to remind the commission that you directed me to put together a policy, and that policy will be something that I will share with you, but it's not a commission policy, so it's not something you'll see for approval in the future, but as soon as it's completed, I'll, I'll get it to you, okay?
Okay, I appreciate that clarification. Mayor Pro Tim Hill, you had one other thing?
Yeah, I just, this property has been a big topic of concern for a couple of years now in our community, and that love and care and concern is a good thing as we go through figuring out how to manage all of this. I, I, I wish, we, to me, this is a great example of where government can help people figure out how to make things happen, where if we, with staff assistance, we can bring players together and figure it out together, and so this is an example of, of the value of having public management of lands and bringing public and private parties together. And I look forward to seeing what, what has developed, and certainly in that year's time, where we are a year from now and coming in with a much, with an understanding, because it also sounds like things have been growing and evolving over time without any writing down of anything, and so we're moving out of having unwritten or sort of, well, it sounds like unwritten policies, is that fair to say? There wasn't, there was, there was a general permit, and so there was a lot of who knew who and that kind of stuff that could let, that may or may not have been how things were done, but certainly nothing was written down. So, we are moving towards having things written down, and for that alone, I feel comfortable voting for this and knowing that we have a timeline on when the policies are going to be done, and that we have a policy, a timeline for review, and for those reasons, I'm willing to vote for this.
Thank you. All right, so just to tie things up, I want to thank city staff for working on this. I know you got a little creative there with the eighty percent sale price and getting this HTMA worked out. I know there's separate items, but they're, they're closely related. Thank you to NTN for the work that you've done to this point and for your willingness to put it in formal, formal writing and move forward and be a partner with the city on this, we appreciate it. You guys can go ahead and take a seat now, you've stood up there long enough, thank you. That being said, city clerk, could we please have a roll call vote on this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Bonzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Hill?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Thank you. All right, our final item under new business is creation of an ad hoc housing committee. City clerk, could we please have the background?
Thank you, Mayor. Background, in order to better, better understand the role of the city as it relates to housing affordability in the city of Marquette, the mayor requests the city commission establish an ad hoc housing committee. The city commission rules the procedure, allow for the establishment of such groups, provided they have specific tasks to be accomplished, and a date is set for dissolution of the task force. It is recommended that this task force be comprised of eight members, with one city commission member being appointed by the mayor and with sunset after an eighteen-month period. The community development director, or his designate, will be the staff liaison to the ad hoc housing committee. This committee would be charged with reviewing its existing plans and programs and preparing a report based on their findings. It is recommended that city staff be tasked with drafting a recommendation for the membership of this committee based on knowledge of the subject matter and involvement in the community. Selection of ad hoc housing committee members would follow the usual application process. Fiscal effect, the members of the ad hoc housing committee will serve an unpaid volunteer status per City Code, Chapter Two, Article Four, Division One, Section Two dash three nine three. Minor clerical support will be supplied by the community development staff. Recommendation, establish an ad hoc housing committee for the period January twenty eighth to twenty twenty to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, and direct the city manager to recommend the membership of the committee for approval by the city commission at the January twenty seventh, twenty twenty meeting. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, clerk. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Bonzel.
Before I make my motion, I just want to note that there will be one slight difference from the recommended motion, so, right at the end, so just if my colleagues can note that. I move that we establish an ad hoc housing committee for the period January twenty eighth, two thousand twenty to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, direct the city manager to recommend the membership of the committee for approval by the city commission at the January twenty seventh, two thousand twenty meeting, and require the committee to submit an initial report to the city commission by August thirty first, two thousand twenty.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Lawrence.
I second that.
Commissioner Bonzel, any comments?
I would just add that the language that I added at the end is just to ensure that, you know, that this committee is intended to meet to sunset after eighteen months, and I think it would not be a good thing if potentially they didn't produce any report or recommendation to the commission on this very important issue of housing affordability for that entire year and a half-long period. If that were the case, it could be up to two years before we take any tangible action to address rapidly rising housing costs in the city. So therefore, I'm recommending that in my motion, that we require them to report to us in six or seven months.
Commissioner Lawrence, sorry.
I, I think that this committee needs to come with tangible, concrete solutions, so it's definitely important that they report early. I have a lot to say about this, which I think I'll, I'll save for my closing comment, but this is probably one of the most important things that will happen, at least in my term, so I, I really encourage members of the public to, to learn about the committee, get involved. If you've ever been involved in city government before or not, this is probably one of Marquette's biggest problems, is that people are becoming disaffected and disenfranchised and displaced out of the city because of affordability. So, this is, in my opinion, one of the most important ad hoc committees that, that we will probably develop, so I appreciate the, the addition to the early reporting back to city commission in the summer, that's very good.
Commissioners, any additional discussion? Commissioner Schlegel.
Thank you. Just a clarification, when did you want that report back, Commissioner Bonzel?
August thirty first, two thousand twenty.
Mayor Pro Tim Hill?
So, August is when we are doing budget hearings, and we're going to be very, I, there's a lot of, it was a lot going on in August. Not to, I mean, we can, if it doesn't move, that's fine, but I just, an awareness of the time that we're asking of staff in the month of August, and I don't know where that date came from, but I'm very conscious of how much work happens in the month of August for folks, and I wonder if, if moving it to September would, I mean, there's, we're here for hours and hours and hours in August, and if, if you would entertain that thought, I don't, yeah.
Commissioner Bonzel.
I would be happy to amend the language August thirty first in my motion to instead read September thirtieth, two thousand twenty.
Do we have a second on that amendment? Commissioner Lawrence.
I second that amendment.
So, let's vote on just that amendment at this point. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Amendment on the, the motion to the amendment passes seven zero. Commissioner Stonehouse, it looked like you had some additional discussion.
I just had a, a question here, I'm looking for a mission. I'm looking for a clear mission statement for the ad hoc committee, and what I see is the committee will be charged with reviewing existing plans and programs and preparing a report based on their findings. So, there's no solutions recommended coming out of this, it simply is a report of a status quo.
So, it was my intention in creating this committee to have the committee look at mid-range housing, the gap in the city of Marquette, and determine problems and solutions.
There's no requirement for solutions here. There are problems, there are requirements for, the requirement is, tell us what we have, give us a situation, but there's no requirement within this document that says recommended solutions, or even recommended options. If that's the intention, we should amend this, or if that is the intention, we can just let this go as it is and then use this as a stepping stone to go on now to, now let's look at solutions, once we understand the problems and what we have out there.
City manager, what would be your recommendation?
Well, at this point, do you feel comfortable, Dennis, making a comment, but I think where we run into problems is with the planning commission and their charge, and we've struggled with this resol, or this motion for a few days now, so I'm going to let Dennis kind of explain.
Yeah, actually, I appreciate the opportunity, I'll keep it real short. What Commissioner Stonehouse said is, is kind of what we were thinking in the community development office when we put this together, is let's review all the materials we have, let's hear from the committee members that, and the mayor that wanted to form the committee, and then formulate, find out what the problem is as a stepping stone, working the next step towards the possible solutions. That's, that was my take on it when I was helping the city manager put this together.
I mean, I'm happy with that, I'm not.
I appreciate that clarification, and I'm okay with.
Trying to make sure we all understand what it actually says.
Thank you, Commissioner Stonehouse and Dennis for clarification, and I'm okay with that moving forward. Go ahead, Mayor Pro Tim Hill.
And following on, there's the question of housing affordability, but I think the others, again, the, sort of that, the other side of the equation is the housing construction crisis. We have a housing affordability crisis in part because we have a housing construction crisis, and that I suspect that, which is a bigger, broader question than what happens within the physical boundaries of this community. And so I think these are all very, very important questions, but that scope of, why, why isn't, there's clearly a demand, why isn't housing being built, and then that causes, there's a shortage, and on and on and on, in relation to not just the city footprint, but the larger, there's much larger forces at play from international tariffs on down. So, I, I applaud the idea of, of taking on this committee, but I think, yeah, the question of scope is going to be critical, and I hope that you spend a good amount of time working on that, because that's going to help with developing solutions that really can be effective. And I, I put that in as my two cents at this point.
Thank you. So, this is something I've been asking for, for two years, I'm thrilled to see it finally come into fruition. Obviously, we've got some details we need to work out, but I feel like this is a good starting place, we've got to start somewhere and start the conversation, so we may be kind of floundering through it in the beginning, but my hope is that we're able to come up with some concrete problems, and then in the future, some solutions. I appreciate your comments, Commissioner Stonehouse. I will be appointing, appointing Commissioner Bonzel to this commission, our committee, ad hoc committee, to represent the commission, and while I know it's a difficult task, I'm looking forward to seeing what challenges and the group can help address. Commissioner Bonzel, do you have any additional comments?
Well, I just want to thank you very much, Madam Mayor, for choosing to appoint me to serve on the committee, it's a great honor, and I'm really excited about it. And I also just wanted to, to mention that I understand the concern about the sort of open-ended mission of this, this committee, but I actually think that that could be an asset rather than a hindrance, because I think that housing affordability is such a complex issue that intersects with so many other issues that we deal with, that giving the committee the flexibility to think about and potentially address some of those other issues as well as they pertain to housing affordability is very important. And I also think that although we will not be necessarily coming up with complete policies or recommendations to the commission in that sense, that the report will probably include a lot of information, which will suggest very clearly many potential remedies to the problem we have right now.
Great, thank you. And if there's no further discussion, let's go ahead and take a vote. All in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Motion passes seven zero. Brings us to public comment. Public comments may not exceed three minutes per person, please clearly state your name and physical address unless you have already stated your address during this meeting. Anyone for public comment?
Frank Javero, these are my opinions. When someone who's reserved time isn't speaking to the agenda item, the chair is to have the timer paused until the person. If this happens again, the board as a whole decides whether the speaker be allowed to continue. Realize that if mishandling is alleged over the course of that item, then this becomes pertinent to that item. Our opportunity was stolen from us foolishly. The time taken by our public is seldomly excessive in Marquette as it might be in a large city, so that's no reason. The main concern is that viable agenda comments are seldom addressed by this board, mere minutes after they're heard. If we must comment on all agenda matter during opening comment, over an hour can pass during presentations and hearings. Dynamic as these meetings are, our words become a mishmash. Theoretically, this shouldn't matter, but it does with this board. Many times, three minutes isn't enough to speak to all agenda items combined. Our members failed to account for this because they're either too new to understand, or they neglected to put themselves in our position, or they have a history of operating this way. That fateful vote of December sixteenth got this board off to a pitiful start by compromising the effectiveness of our public participation for the sleaziest of reasons, though they may not have been aware of that. It's yet another sick statement about how little public comment is valued, and they call themselves transparent. Mr. Bonzel's research means nothing against the pages on public record along these lines. He'll learn that many virtues pertaining to life and democracy aren't taught at Harvard. He'll learn that many virtues pertaining to life and democracy aren't taught at Harvard. This board is urged to reconsider its selfish decision. It's as easy as a member motioning to reinstate agenda comment. If the motion fails, at least that member is on record as having made an effort to reverse a mistake. This new board dealt a blow to democracy. Great start. They're playing right into Mr. Fraser's assertion of every member, every mayor. At least Ms. Smith does a better job running our meetings. Finally, on December 16th, Mr. Fraser laughed after my Lake Shore erosion comment. It read, quote, "It's clear that none of you ever heard the Joni Mitchell lyrics. Don't it always seem to go that you don't know what you've got till it's gone? Well, in our case, we can't even pave over paradise with a parking lot because the land is gone entirely," end quote. Mr. Fraser is asked, what is so funny about using this example for one of the most serious matters ever to confront this board? He has a history of inappropriate laughing and joking, like saying our library would be better if a certain kind of punch was available. He'll be happy to know that another near-empty booze jug was found in the men's room. December 16th, he responded to me unconstructively by hitting the replay button on his tape recorder yet again. His behavior as a commissioner is too unbecoming and downright weird for him to serve adequately.
Anyone else for public comment?
My name is Don Britton. I live at 121 Dearview Trail in Harvey. I just wanted to congratulate the NTN for their purchase on the property. I think it's a good sale. Also, I'd like to be able to work with the city on any more developments or anything with the Hartwood project. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. Brings us to comments from the commission. Commissioner Stonehouse, if you could please start us off.
Please. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Three quick ones, if I can. I really would like to see a barrier across Lake Street from the snowmobile side. I mean, that's... You know, we prohibit snowmobiles within the city of Marquette. They don't belong on Lake Street. We need to take, obviously, firm action. I do look forward to 29 January, and the co-meeting we'll have with the public, rather, with the Planning Commission, that's at 6:00 PM. I suspect it'll probably be in this room. Good information, good time to get a better understanding of how the Planning Commission looked at melding in the marijuana ordinance into the Land Development Code, and that's important, I think, for all of us. And lastly, trail management plan, great step forward. A lot of places do that. This is not a unique thing to the city of Marquette, it's been done other places in the country with great success. And as we build this thing, and as we kind of tune it, I think everybody will find it to work very, very well, indeed. I have nothing further, other than to wish everybody a good week and a safe week. Mr. Schlegel.
Commissioner Schlegel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple of... It's been a really busy couple of months here, personally, and on the commission. We had a very, I'm gonna say, exciting, and I think it's the right word, but for the homeless task force that's been put together, we had a very productive first meeting, getting to know each other, the other people in the community that are holding this very close to their hearts as well. And I just... I want you all to know that the actions that are gonna be coming from this task force, I really feel are going to be something that not only can we be proud of, but other communities are gonna be able to take a look at and maybe incorporate. I just have a crazy feeling that all the right people are in the right place for this right now. So, I look forward to keeping you informed with the task force, and with news from the task force, and developments as they come along. I would like to say that I'm gonna beat Commissioner Stonehouse for that one barrier vote, and say, "I demand that a barrier be put up." In jest, I'm sure that that will get taken care of, and Carrie, I would very much appreciate your vote this next election, regardless. And I'm sure Mr. Stonehouse would as well. There we go. This past three weeks, I've been able to be part of a group hosting 25, I believe it was, Costa Rican exchange students. We had two girls staying with us. It was quite the experience. My Spanish is limited, but fortunately for them, they take a year of... They have Spanish... Or English taught throughout their schooling. So, I want you to... I wish... I wish they could've been here tonight. They're at their last potluck dinner. They're leaving at 11 o'clock tonight to be bussed down to the airport. But it has been an amazing experience, getting to know these young men and women. They put on a dance for all of the Spanish students at the high school. Madam Mayor and I were able to attend that. I went early because it's going on right now, and I'd be missing it, but it was fabulous. I'm talking about traditional clothing, traditional music, traditional dance. For people that had been working on it for a little over a month, they did an amazing job, but more importantly, the students, the MSHS students, received it so well. It was just... It was great, great to see their reaction, and then the questions and comments afterwards. To go from... They came in the day after Christmas, and then we had that snowstorm, and for them to be able to have their first snowball fights, their first snowballs, their first experience with... I mean, these kids were freezing at day one. But we went to the Ironor Heritage Museum, the Marquette History Museum, all of these places that... And some of these places I hadn't been, so I was really glad to be a part of it as well. And I want to just say how great of an experience it was having these kids here, and I look forward... I hope my daughter's gonna make the trip back to visit them in June, when it's insanely hot down there. But if you had... If you had a chance to see them around town, that you may or may not have realized that we had a contingent in from Costa Rica, but they were here, and they were loving it, and they... And so many have made this, you know, almost in three weeks, a place that they definitely want to experience summer. But it's been a great experience. That pretty much wraps it up, and I will pass it on. Thank you.
Mayor Proton Hill.
Thank you. And I have a couple of things. One is, coming up on January 25th, is the... Make sure I get the title right. The Cities Annual Art Awards. There will be a gala with fun fancy stuff, and I'm sure snow boots, involved on January 25th, at the... Down at the... In the arts and culture space downstairs at the public library, we'll be honoring a number of folks, from teachers to businesses, to artists, and artist volunteers. I'm really excited to get to be a part of that event. Congratulations to all the winners. It's a very fun and exciting time, and folks are invited to come. Also, coming up, well, now that we are here in 2020, it is the 100th anniversary of women getting the right to vote, and there's gonna be a big event, actually, at the Regional History Center on January 29th, which is also when we're gonna have our meeting on the marijuana with the Planning Commission. But I would highly encourage folks, there's also an exhibit on the history of women getting the right to vote over at the History Center. It's a really terrific education opportunity, especially with this year, with all the importance votes coming up. And related to that, to some part, to some extent, is the... This Saturday, January 18th, starting at noon, the Women's March is gonna happen for the fourth time. The... We're gathering, there's gonna be civic groups inside in the commons, there'll be coffee and pastries for sale, and then we'll march at 1:00 and have a rally. And it's about women coming together to find their own, whatever way you want, to participate in your community and support your community. And then there's NMU students who are also putting on an event at the Ordoq at 3:00, and I hope that you can join us there. And finally, because it is a primary year, never too early to think about this, we do have no... You can register to vote absentee now in Michigan for any reason, and you have until February 24th to ask for that for the March 10th presidential primary coming up. Thank you.
Commissioner Lawrence.
First, I want to say I'm grateful to be appointed to the Sister Cities Committee. Thank you. Culture... Cultural... Cultural... Culture immersion in exchange is so important. It teaches us not only about the other areas that we partner up with, but it does teach us about ourselves, and I think that's definitely important, especially right now when Marquette is kind of having some deep conversations about culture sensitivity, and so I'm grateful to be a part of that committee. Last Friday was Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, so Blake, thank you. Law enforcement is one of the most underappreciated, undervalued, and most dangerous fields in America, and we need to encourage good police officers of outstanding character to join that field. So, I appreciate all the work that your department does, and I'm confident that the integrity of our police department is intact. Congratulations, Commissioner Bonzel, on being appointed to the Housing Committee. I think it's a bit of a misnomer, the Housing Committee, because I think we're talking a little bit beyond housing. In my opinion, I think this is about the entire spectrum of affordability in Marquette, and affordable housing is one of those things, but also market-based solutions, and looking at things like tax rates, utility rates, water and sewage, or anything that really causes the disaffected or disenfranchised and displaced people out of this wonderful city. So, I do hope that a broad group of people join that committee. I think it's one of the most important tasks given to this commission. Both Commissioner Bonzel and I aggressively campaigned on it, and I feel that we do know what some of those solutions are, but it's essential that we get a passionate group of people to explore how we got to where we are, so we can address those. I don't think we can afford to have kind of an elite group of people defining and celebrating what we've already achieved, so as much as I do want us to look at the things that we have accomplished, I do want us to truly understand affordability beyond stats and data. I want those too, but it's essential that we're also looking at testimonials from residents who are victims of this issue, and combining it with questions like, what does gentrification do to the values of our neighborhoods? How do property taxes affect rental rates? How is urban sprawl contributing? What do pilts for low-income facilities do to Marquette? Does it make it more affordable, less affordable? Are tiny homes a solution? Community benefit agreements? I think we need to have a broad grasp on the affordability of Marquette. And in the makeup of this committee, if you're interested, whether you're a low-income renter, I want you to fill this vacancy. If you've ever struggled with your rent or poverty, your perspectives are just as important as an economist, and they're essential to this conversation. Affordable housing means something completely different to me than it does to someone who's extremely affluent, and it means something completely different to somebody who's stuck in perpetual poverty. So, we do need to be mindful of those people pushed out of Marquette. City Commission takes the reports of our committees very seriously, so please consider joining that committee. It will be one of the most important things City Commission does in the next three years, and I am personally looking for concrete solutions, so if those can be... I think it's good that the mission is a little vague, because I want you to take a deep dive. It's a great opportunity to get involved and have a big impact on the direction and the identity of Marquette. So, other than that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Fraser.
Great meeting as usual. Lots of fun stuff. DPW, thanks a lot. You guys are doing awesome with the snow. We've had a little bit of snow this winter, and everybody's tearing down snowbanks, getting rid of snow. I've got friends that work in the truck industry, and they're already hauling snow. Usually, they don't haul snow till, like, late February, and they're already hauling snow for Christmas. It's crazy how much snow we've gotten. As far as the lake, we all know the lake's gone up quite a bit. Commissioner Stonehouse and I are both boulders. Been boating for a long time. We know the lake goes up and down a lot, and my dad's got a boathouse involved in the boating community, and I see it affecting our property a lot during the last storm. The parking lot flooded a lot, and the city is working very hard to maintain our shoreline, and that's where we're gonna move in the road and shore up that area, because the boulders that are there right now are not doing the job. And for comparison, my parents are down south winter, and they... The little community there, and they took a big step forward years ago, and expanded their beachfront by... It's like the size of a football field, excuse me, but they basically pumped... I don't know how they did it. They did put rocks, they used sand and dunes. They pumped in water and sand from the beach, underneath the water, and made the beach twice as big as it was to control erosion, and more beach for everybody else. Used pieces of little beach and certain properties, but it also controls a lot of erosion, and they deal with hurricanes down there. So, we will work with whoever we get to work with to get it done, but working on controlling Lake Shore, so everybody has kinda do the waterfront.
Commissioner Bonzel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to first echo Commissioner Lawrence's comments about our local law enforcement. I grew up in a law enforcement household. My mom worked for the city of Marquette for 31 years as a secretary, and my dad was deputy sheriff for 25 years here in Marquette County. But I recently had the opportunity to ride along in the squad car for an evening with one of our excellent city police officers, Mike Roth. I was so impressed with the courage, the resilience, the professionalism of the Marquette police, and I don't think local residents here in Marquette can truly understand what our officers face on a daily basis, and the burden that they carry to keep our community safe. I just want to sincerely thank Mike, and also Chief Rebold, for that opportunity. I'm very excited that the commission voted tonight to create the Ad Hoc Housing Committee, and I am honored to represent the commission on that committee. Thank you again, Madam Mayor, for that opportunity. The rapidly rising cost of housing in Marquette has already had serious negative consequences for thousands of city residents. In 2018, the median sale price of a home in the city of Marquette rose by 12% in just one year, and all indications are that it rose by a similar rate this year. And rent, as any renters can attest, market rate rent is also rising at a similarly rapid rate. This is simply unsustainable, and working-class people, students, young families, young professionals are getting slowly priced out of our city. This is a problem that we need to address. And so, I really look forward to coming up with a report, helping to produce a report as a member of this committee, and hopefully using that report to... As a guide for us to finally take some tangible, bold action to address the rising cost of housing in Marquette. And I also want to remind everyone that we will be having a public work session on Wednesday, January 29th, at 6:00 PM, and a public hearing on the proposed zoning regulations for adult-use marijuana establishments. That hearing and the vote will be on February 10th at 6:00 PM. And I encourage anyone interested in this topic, I know there's a lot of people in the community who have thoughts on it, to come out and share those thoughts with us. Finally, if you have any experience or expertise with housing, whether that's as a landlord, a developer, a renter, homeowner, or, you know, somebody who has served on a appointed or in an appointed or elected position that deals with housing, who has some expertise on the issue, please watch for the Ad Hoc Housing Committee application on the city website, and I would ask you to please seriously consider applying, because we only have one member out of eight so far. We need seven other people who can bring a lot of expertise and knowledge and experience to the table, to have an effective committee to address this important issue. So, thank you very much, and hope everybody has a nice night.
Thank you. A few comments for me tonight. We haven't had a meeting for about a month now, so thinking back to December 18th, this group had a work session to discuss the Founders Landing pile reuse project. We're running into some issues with permitting, and we're working through those. Looking forward to seeing what solutions we're able to come up with, and what the potential costs of that are in the future. We also had a work session on January 2nd to discuss the Lake Shore here in Marquette, and working towards some solutions, and hopefully what we've done so far is able to shore us up for now, and looking forward to the future grants and planning on that. As Commissioner Schlegel talked about, I also joined in a couple of times with the exchange students from Costa Rica, and I was honored to welcome them on their first day here in Marquette before they went out on a scavenger hunt in downtown. And then last Friday, Commissioner Schlegel and I got to watch them do a really nice performance, and even better than the performance was watching Commissioner Schlegel navigate Friday night plans with three teenage girls. He's an incredible force to be reckoned with in that regard, so a nice job. I appreciate him. I appreciate him stepping up and being a host for that program. I was actually part of a similar program back in 2004 at Marquette Senior High School where I went to Costa Rica and stayed with the host family, so it was pretty cool to be able to welcome them here. We've talked a little bit about some of the appointments that I've made. I just wanted to kind of recap that. Commissioner Schlegel mentioned that he has been appointed to the housing task force, so thank you, Commissioner Schlegel, for stepping up in that role. Looking forward to seeing what, homeless, what did I say? Housing, sorry. Homeless Task Force. Looking forward to hearing the updates on that. Commissioner Lawrence has taken the Sister Cities partnership role and I appreciate him stepping up there. And then we've got Commissioner Bonzal on the ad hoc housing committee. So those are the appointments I've made so far as mayor. And we've already covered that planning commission work session regarding marijuana zoning, so that'll be coming up soon as well. One friendly reminder, if you have a fire hydrant near your home, if you would please clear it of ice and snow, it can make a really big difference in an emergency fire situation. And I have seen some of our neighbors have been doing that and I just wanted to throw it out there as we're dealing with snow removal. Lastly, just a reminder that I will be on maternity leave for the next five meetings from January 27th through March 30th. Mayor Protem Hill will be running the meetings in my absence. Thank you, Mayor Protem Hill, for doing that and thank you to the rest of the commission for your support during my leave. That's all I have. City Manager, do you have any comments this evening?
Sure. The first one is we're not going to let you rest just because you're on leave. Okay? Doesn't work that way.
We'll see.
Doesn't work that way. Noah, well, thank you, commissioners, for your support again tonight in helping us move the business of the city forward. The NTN agreements were both lengthy and time-consuming and we put a lot of work into it. I wanted to thank NTN and Carrie Gottlieb and Lori Hosworth for primarily helping and working with us, you know, through that process. I want to just mention one other thing because I have a, potentially a bigger audience is we've been having some, I've been getting quite a few questions regarding the traffic signals in town as to whether or not they're ever going to be timed or ever going to be working in unison. And I just want to tell people that yes, that will happen. It's just that we haven't quite gotten there yet. We've had computer issues, we've had fiber issues and we're working through some problems, but that still is our goal. And lastly, good luck, Madam Mayor, tomorrow morning. Hope everything goes well. I'm sure it will and like I said, I'll see you on Tuesday afternoon.
Thank you. We are adjourned at 7:53 PM.